Gone, uh, like nine days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so our four oldest are all gone and then the two at home are the little girls. Not so little anymore.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so first up we have the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion for approval?
All motion.
I'll say connect.
And all that approve? Thank you. And then next we have our financial report.
Very short. We have a 2.9 percent, I mean a 2.9 fund balance in our general fund and we're right on track with our budget. Our SPOS funds received this month were 97,000 and you'll notice on there that our bond debt payments were made this month. And our next bond debt payments will be made in June of '22. So we have a $1.2 million dollar balance in our SPOS.
Wow.
And we have no deficits in Mary Christmas.
Can you say that one more time? That's great news. Thank you so much. All right, and next your information items.
Um, the reports for school and departments are in e-board and available for review. And moving into the superintendent's report, I want to first begin with an update on our health status report and the revised mitigation strategies that we were going to move into. Since October the 8th, the district has had less than 1% of our employees and students with any positive COVID diagnoses. We appreciate everyone's support and continued focus on strong health. Since November the 15th, there have been no reports of any positive diagnoses for students. And based on the availability of COVID vaccines and the health data trending below half of a percent for any positive cases within the district, the mitigation of strategy for face coverings will move to an optional face covering beginning when we return from school break. And we'd like to do that on January the 11th. That gives us a Friday to come into school, look at our data, determine if there's any continuation or any changes. And this will allow us to monitor the progress that we're making. But we are very excited to see the faces of our students. Again, we will have options available for students who choose to utilize a face covering. We have those available in our office. We do ask that folks do bring theirs for sanitary reasons. But we are excited to be able to look at our students' faces. We will continue with our increased cleaning protocols through KBS. We will continue with our hand washing stations throughout the schools. But I did want to make that known again. We've been monitoring this since October. Every Friday, we do have our report online and we're just very pleased with what we have seen in the district this school year. Any questions? And then moving on to some good information and some recognitions, I'm going to take a minute and come up to the podium because I have a couple of these.
First, we'd like to begin with Coach Battle and Coach Ford. Last year, they led our basketball team, our boys' basketball team, to the final four for the first time in school history. And our plan had been to recognize them for that. And through multiple reasons, we had been unable to schedule our time together. But we thought, what a better way to do that tonight. We are getting ready to begin the busiest basketball season in the next few weeks. And we appreciate their service and their support and the work that they're doing with our team. So Coach Battle, and then you'll... And our board wanted to make sure that you had something with your name on it, prime him. Excuse themselves and get to the gym where we can kill it and win another one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this next recognition we're excited about, we know that kids cannot learn until their basic needs are met. And one of the most critical needs that has to happen is providing nutritious meals. Tonight, in collaboration with the State Department of Education, we are excited to recognize the school foods department for their commitment to No Kid Hungry. Um, No Kid Hungry emphasizes that we will make sure that all of our kids have available meals, breakfast and lunch. And we utilize our wraparound services for students who may need items on the weekend. Our school foods is led by Ms. Echo. So we'd like to take tonight to recognize her and her entire team for the countless hours that they do and for providing the most nutritious meals for our students and making sure they're needed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, I'd like to take a moment and recognize our Board of Education. Um, we are tonight going to take a quick picture during the break with everyone. But our Board of Education recently received the leading edge, uh, I'm sorry, the exemplary Board of Education from the Georgia School Board Association. Exemplary Board is the highest level of board recognition that a board can receive. And it is based on making sure that a Board of Education is involved with a strategic plan, that we're reaching the vision and mission set forth by all, and is from their service and their leadership. So take a moment and extend our appreciation and thanks to this board.
This is the second time that they've received exemplary. In the past, we've received distinguished, but exemplary is the highest. So we are very pleased and appreciative of the work and service that they do. So thank you, board. And we will be taking a photo with the board. And next, I'd like to also, along with the board, ask Ms. Hurd, Mr. Kemp and Mr. Colazo to come forward.
The Georgia School Board Association and the Georgia School Superintendent Association recognizes best practices in public schools. And we are so honored and pleased that this year, Chattahoochee County Schools was considered a best practice in the state of Georgia. And they received the 2021 Leading Edge Award. This Leading Edge Award is for communication, the best practices of communication, for ensuring that the positive Panther that the story is told to the public, whether that's through the newspaper, the website, or just the culture and climate that's in the school building. Um, this team has made sure that we are a best practice for the state of Georgia. So if you would join me in honoring them with a round of applause and thanking them for the work that they do. Many school districts have a PR team, a public relations team, where they have a team who's always responsible for getting the messages out. And our team really is multiple people following that same mission. So we appreciate the work that they're doing. Thank you, God. So I said, we will want to make sure we get a quick photo with them. And the next recognition is just an absolute honor. We all know absolutely that our students are way more than a test score. But we also know the reality of the world that we live in, that the public judges us many times based on the scores, based on our achievement scores. This past year, the U.S. News and World Record, which is a leading national publication, decided that they wanted to release data on K-Aids scores in regards to their achievement. And they ranked them. And many of the schools that received positive rankings were schools that had high socioeconomics. So schools that had a lot of money and, you know, they had all these things coming into them. Well, there was one school that was listed on the U.S. News World Report as a top 30% elementary school. And that was Chattahoochee County Elementary. Not only were they competing with some of the best and largest schools around, our school has over 90% students that reside in poverty. That doesn't stop our elementary school. They have a no excuses attitude. They create a culture that says all kids are welcome, all kids are going to achieve. And the team works tirelessly, whether it is parent fathers, custodians, school food, administrators, teachers. That team works together for the good of all children. So tonight, with everybody who is here from CEC, I'd like to recognize you with U.S. News and World Report, Best Public School Top 30%. CCEC folks, stand up. We want to recognize all of you. And before we, at John, we would like to make sure we get a picture with you all. Again, it's a team effort. I know Ms. Hurd accepted this on your behalf, but it took the entire village for this to happen for our children.
That's our...
And the last item on the superintendent's report is policy update. Um, and it is in e-board for public review. For the next 30 days, the following policies will lay on the table for public participation or review. The first is Policy DC or a Policy BCBI, which is a revision. It's the public participation in meetings. And the revisions include a line with the open meetings regulation. So again, that, uh, that policy is just a revision. Policy DC is a new policy. It is for an annual operating budget. And we wanted to add this new policy to strengthen our internal controls to ensure that we're always operating within the confines of our approved budget. Policy DCL is a fund balance policy, and we have added a revision in there. And it actually will strengthen our accountability to the taxpayers to ensure that we work towards always having a 5% fund balance. So in the past, we had this policy, but we did not put a target on the fund balance. So we would like to work at a minimum to have a 5% fund balance. If we do not meet that, you'll see in that policy, it says that we'll create a plan for how we're going to get back to that level. And then Policy DIB is a financial report policy with a revision. And it just ensures the internal controls for our departments in regards to budget and inventory being monitored. So again, those were recommendations from our last audit and we are pleased with the results from that. And definitely want to lead to the next level to continue being exemplary. So again, those are available for review and input for 30 days.
Thank you. All right, next, our other favorite part, the recognitions, more recognitions.
Ms. Hurd, we'll start with the elementary school for your student and staff recognitions.
Good evening. It's always a great honor to recognize our staff and our employees. And I will start with our employee of the month. Our employee of the month for the month of November is none other than Ms. Nita Strong. As Ms. Strong makes her way to the floor, I'll share this about her. Um, we actually interviewed Ms. Strong two years ago. Uh, but unfortunately, she didn't want to work with the upper grade. But nevertheless, when a vacancy became available in first grade, um, she was one of the first people that we thought about and so thankful that we did. Um, these are just a few of the things that our colleagues have to say about her. She is a positive ray of sunshine to our Chaco family. She exudes an enthusiasm for learning and instruction that is infectious. She is positive, cheerful, always has a smile on her face to greet her colleagues and students. She constantly thinks of new ideas to make learning fun for her students. She goes above and beyond each and every day. She's an early riser, is always being creative, one of the first staff members in the building. And I'll say this, is that the older students get, that it's hard for them to keep that magic of Christmas alive. She has managed to have our fifth graders looking for the elf every morning. There's what is done throughout the night. And that says a lot about her, that she is amazing, um, asset to our school. And we are so very thankful for you, Ms. Strong. Congratulations. And now for our student of the month. And I'll start with our youngest student of the month, Navia Shaner. And Navia's teacher, Ms. Richards, has this to say about her. I can always count on Navia to do the right thing. She's always very hardworking and she meets my expectations every day. She's such a sweet spirit in our classroom and a joy to teach. Congratulations, Navia. Now, our kindergarten student of the month is Connor Elliott. And I don't see Connor in the audience, but I will share what his teacher had to say about him. Connor has made so much progress this year. He's working so hard and always tries his very best. He's always showing his Panther cause everywhere he goes, and I'm so proud of all of his hard work. Congratulations, Connor. And our first grade student of the month is Connor Edwards. And Connor is not here tonight, but his teacher has this to share. He is a model student. He strives to be the very best. He is currently the student with the highest I-RAD assignments in the entire school. He is such a great leader in the classroom as well. Whenever anyone needs assistance with reading or sounding out words, he's always the first to offer help. Congratulations, Connor Edwards. And our second grade student of the month is Kylie Cooper. And Kylie's teacher has this to say about her. Kylie is an exceptional, hardworking student. She never quits, never gives up, even when something gets hard. Nor does she rush through her work. She always takes her time, is always polite to adults, and always very kind to her peers. If anyone needs help in our classroom, Kylie is the first to offer assistance. Congratulations, Kylie. And our third grade student of the month is Maylin Childs. And Maylin's teacher has this to say about her. And her teachers have this to share. Maylin has maintained a growth mindset during this quarter. She has continued to strive for academic achievement in the classroom by giving her very best effort every day and using strategies consistently. She always has a smile on her face. She loves to talk and has such a warm and friendly personality as she is a sunshine in our classroom each and every day. So congratulations, Maylin. And our fourth grade student of the month is Caitlin Hershey. And although Caitlin is not here, I will share what her teachers had to say about Caitlin. She has shown tremendous growth in her academics, always willing to lend a helping hand with others. She's such a hard worker and always puts forth her best effort. She has a good representation of what a student of the month is all about. Congratulations, Caitlin. And our fifth grade student of the month is Aiden Robert. And I will share what Aiden's teachers have to say about him. Aiden works hard every day. He cares about making good grades. He's never a behavior problem. Is always willing to work with and help others when needed. He is also a part of our safety patrol and takes his job very, very seriously. He is polite and respectful and just a wonderful little panther at our school. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our little Panthers and our employee of the month.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
We're gonna do this in reverse. I'll be the teacher of the month, staff member of the month last. We'll start with our sixth grade student of the month, which is Azaya Williams. Azaya was nominated for sixth grade student of the month by two teachers. She has excelled in class and is more than willing to help out her peers. She has worked diligently in her classes and put forth great effort and all of her math and physics. Congratulations.
Don't mess up the hair.
Seventh grade is Lizette Flores-Cantara. She's a great student and the choice for student of the month because she is always prepared. She's always on time for class and was the ideal example for our middle school student. Congratulations. All right, eighth grade is Alec Greer. Alec excelled last year as a virtual student and continues to apply the same dedication to his studies in person this year. Alec has been completing work beyond the eighth grade expectation with ease. He remains focused and attentive in class while helping out others as needed. He also has a great sense of humor. And our ninth grade student of the month is Isabel Jimenez. Isabel has embraced being a Chaco Panther. She is active in athletics and continues to excel in the classroom. She's focused in class and regularly completes her assignments early. Isabel can be seen with a smile on her face even through the mask. And is polite, well-mannered and a privilege to teach. Congratulations. Tenth grade, Mercedes Samuel. Mercedes transferred to this school last nine weeks and has never let her being a new student stop her from flourishing. She's extremely well behaved, always prepared for class and has a great overall attitude. She has been a tremendous addition to the Chaco family and we're happy and proud to have her. The eleventh grade student is Mr. Zane Tom. Zane has been an outstanding student this year and deserves a student of the month for being the epitome of what more to be. He has demonstrated an impeccable academic performance, earning all A's and has an average of 101 in chemistry. That's a tough 101 because that's a tough class. He went above and beyond in academics by serving as color guard. He went above and beyond in academics by serving as color guard commander during home football games, supporting the football team by traveling to away games. Zane was also a member of the drill team, which earned first place in the male category at the area competition against thirteen schools. He was the commander for two of the three first-place teams and was required to profitably memorize and precisely conduct over fifty commands for the drill sequence. His performance this month was incredible and deserved student of the month. I also like that. That's the longest one I've ever read. And our twelfth grade student of the month is Melanie Villalobos. Melanie is hardworking and kind. She is helpful to others during class, always motivated to complete her work and help others complete theirs. On top of that, she is active in JRTC sports as well as our class president. So, congrats, Melanie. All right, now for our staff member of the month. Our staff member is Ms. Karen Bowen. Something that Ms. Hurd said, and I realized we got something in common. She said that her staff member of the month is an early riser. And Ms. Bowen, there's like two employees that beat me in the morning. She's one of them. And I mean like six fifteen. She is a tireless worker. Whatever, you know, I say this a lot, but it's always true. When you're an old coach, there's certain things that translate. And one thing that translates is, and when I say translates, I mean from coaching to being an administrator, is that when you find a really good athlete, you give him the ball. It's not complicated. But when you find a really good teacher, you find as many ways to use that teacher as possible. She does everything. She's one of our special education teachers. She also teaches ELA. And then this year, I really, last year, we did a lot of great things with athletics, which we wanted to continue to do, but we felt like we really need to try to expand outside of the athletic world we were in, you know, from an extracurricular standpoint. So we really wanted to have a robust band program and we wanted to look at other areas. So I said, I know just the person to help lead this. I just gotta talk her into doing it. And it was an easy sale. So I approached, well, actually, she approached me. And so we got started and she's done all the work. And just this past weekend, we had our first robotics competition. I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Well, we didn't know, it was late night, so we do have two of them here. It was amazing, their tenacity, their dedication, their fun, their joy, their giggles, their commitment, just like that, like all the time. We dismissed one day after school, they're running to their cars, they're opening the doors already, telling their parents about what the robot did that day. I came in screaming, told guys about it, because, oh, you just should have heard them. Awesome, amazing. And we ended up with ten students, eight girls and two boys. So, but they did extremely well, extremely well. So if you guys ever have a chance, come by the room and they'll maneuver this little robot off the mat.
Ms. Bowen, I think we have to intensify. Wasn't that they just did well? That trophy represents first place, top project. So in that whole competition. We're very proud of you all. If you will give us about two more minutes to finish out three things on our agenda, we will be able to let you have pictures. One is our action item for personnel. I would like to recommend approval of the personnel list attached to E-Board for public review. This includes reassignments, hires, and separations.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
That passes, thank you.
Next is the 2022. So I would say next year, but in a few days. I would like to recommend approval of the 2022 calendar for the Board of Education meeting dates. These will remain on the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 with exception of June and July. So I'd like to recommend approval of the Board of Education meeting dates.
She was quick on that, my goodness. Okay. All that approved? All right, and this is an exciting one.
Yes, and lastly, as you all are aware, as a board and as a community, our Chatco team of employees serves tirelessly. They have continued to serve our students and our community. They exceed every expectation that we put in front of them. And that is why you saw the recognitions tonight. It's because of our entire team of every employee. So tonight, I would like to recommend a one-time pay bonus for Christmas for every employee. And this would be $300 included on their December check.
We all want a motion that one. So we do have to officially have a motion. Who wants to put their name on that? Second? Okay, and all that approve? We'll approve with both hands. Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank y'all. So we appreciate all of you and community for the support of our, every employee within the district. We have no, no one signed up for public participation?
I'm her.
All right. So then that is, we do have an executive session. So before we go into that, I guess we should take a break and then allow for pictures. Okay?
Great.
So we won't go into executive yet, but we will go on a break for pictures. And thank you all.